Much like the news to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in the living and justice for our own rights.
The Mount Pleasant City Commission recognizes the Anishinaabe whose ancestral lands the city stands upon today. We acknowledge the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe and recognize that the three bands of Ajibway, Saginaw, Black River, and Swan Creek have resided on this land for over 200 years. Our acknowledgement of the full history of the tribe and our commitment to be good stewards of the ancestral lands are an expression of gratitude and appreciation to those ancestors who came before us. We give thanks to the generous care with which Anishinaabe and those members of the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe of Michigan have given and continue to give to this land and our community. Clerk, please take your role.
Commissioner Bush?
Here.
Commissioner Chapman?
Here.
Commissioner Ake?
Here.
Commissioner Rollins?
Here.
Commissioner Winger?
Here.
Vice Mayor Alsager?
Here.
Recording in progress.
Mayor Kirschmacher?
Here.
We have a quorum. All right, we have a quorum, so we're going to settle on because we've got a couple of presentations first. Our first presentation is by GRS Consulting.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me a little bit better now? My name is Casey O'Brant-Raines. I'm here representing Gabor Rohr Smith and Company, also known as GRS Consulting. We're an actuarial consulting firm that operates solely in the public sector post-retirement benefit space. So we like to think that, you know, we're kind of in the right place doing consulting for a public sector pension fund as I'm here to talk to you about today. I've been working on the city of Mount Pleasant for the duration of my time at GRS, so about eight years. And the colleagues who peer review my work and work with me on this have been doing it for decades. So we're certainly in familiar territory and it's a pleasure to get to actually be here and speak with you all today because we spent a lot of time thinking about this pension actuarial world. But it's not always the case that people actually want to listen to what we have to say. Though I'm making an assumption that any of you actually want to listen to what I have to say. So I'm just going to kind of pretend that that's the case. Anyway, moving along, so I'm here to talk about the actuarial valuation as of December 31st, 2023. And I see some familiar faces. I was here about a year ago to talk about the valuation as of 2022. But I'll just jump into it. Am I controlling this? Oh, there we go. Perfect. So because, as I said, you know, not everyone spends as much time as we do thinking about this kind of stuff. I'm just going to get into the basics a bit before we dive into some of the numbers because there are a lot of numbers and I will go into as much detail as you want within reason. And then kind of go over the important results, how much money has to go in the piggy bank. I'll talk a little bit about why some numbers changed, how they changed, how that works. A little bit of historic information for reference to kind of see where we're going and try to get an idea of where we want to go. And then I'll wrap it up with the key points and see if anybody has any questions. But to really just get down to the most important part of it, at the end of the day, there are benefits promised that need to be paid. I think for the last year, there was about $2.4 million in benefits to current retirees that got paid. And you can kind of imagine that that's going to take place for the next, you know, 50, 60, 100 years. So the point of what we're doing with this whole pension fund business is if you want to put aside enough money that's going to pay for those benefits, and if you put it aside early enough, then you don't have to contribute all of that. So kind of that brings me then to my diagram here. Well, I guess I'll look at the equation first because I like equations. So your contributions plus your investment return is going to equal your benefits plus your expenses. That's basically just saying this money doesn't come from nowhere. Every dollar that gets paid as a benefit came either as a contribution or it got earned in the market as investment income. The benefits that get paid, as I said, the $2.4 million, which is going to increase into the future, you can imagine kind of zooming out over decades. All the benefits that got paid were money that either was contributed, which is the bottom half of that cylinder on the left, or was earned in the market or, you know, through some kind of interest on some kind of security. Now, the proportions there, while not, you know, precise, there's no way to say this for certain, but generally at least half of the actual dollars that go out of a pension fund do actually come from the market. I think on average it's about 60% if you're talking about a portfolio such as we have here today. So that really stresses the importance of getting the contributions in there on time and how important that investment income is. Okay, so now we kind of have an idea of what we're talking about here. When I talk about benefits in the future, the word for that in today's dollars is liability, actuarial liability. And the green part of that cylinder, that's your assets. So you can kind of think back to this picture when I move on from that. So I'm going to kind of focus on the assets because at the end of the day, we're talking about the pension fund, you know, the trust that is there to fund these benefits. Currently, you have a certain amount of dollars that are in there and they're from past contributions. And those contributions grew with investment income and now we have what do we have today? There's going to be future incomes, future contributions that get made. And hopefully, I would expect that there will be future investment income on all of the money that sits in there. So let's kind of see, in any given year, you're going to have your contribution that goes in. Benefits are going to come out, as I said, it's about $2.5 million as of 2023. And hopefully, the money that's in there during the year is going to earn some investment income. So that's basically how it works. Those are the ins and outs. And that's kind of the picture that we want to have in our mind. So I'll talk a little bit more about what it actually is that we do. So as I said, we calculate the liabilities. That's a measure in today's dollars, I'll call it, of future benefit payments that have to be paid in future decades. We calculate those liabilities, we compare them to the assets on hand, the left cylinder, and then we calculate a contribution rate. For most people, that's the most important part because their eyes are either happy that it went up, or sorry, unhappy that it went up, happy when it goes down. They just want to know what it is because that's how you all have to plan. There's no surprises there. And it doesn't hurt our feelings that no one wants to know anything else about what we do because neither would I. But the funding position is also important because you want to hope that the assets relative to the liabilities is getting bigger because that's kind of the point. Then we want to kind of look at the historical stuff, see, okay, how did our assumptions meet actual experience? So as actuaries, anyone who's going to calculate things in this space, nothing's for sure. You don't know when someone's going to retire, if they're going to not quit throughout their career. You don't know when people are going to die. You just have expectations which are based on assumptions. And it's really the extent to which these assumptions actually come to fruition or do not come to fruition that leads to different types of what we call experience. And then along, you know, kind of along the way, we want to talk about risks. None of these risks are really large surprises. You know, folks are living longer. I don't think that's news to anybody. But if you've got to pay a pension longer than you thought you otherwise would have, that's more of a liability. Obviously, good for the person who's getting the pension and their families. That's what we want. But you kind of want to keep your eye on those things. And obviously, the investment risk, because this money is invested, it's going to bounce around. But we'll talk about that a little bit later. Now, I'm really just going to get to the, this is the rub here. So last year, we had $38.3 million in this liability. That's the present value of those benefits that are going to go out. And that went up a little bit, which we would expect to about $39.6 million. Looking over at the asset side, last year, we measured it at about $31.8 million. That went up, which is good, to just under $33.2 million. And the difference between those two numbers is going to be your unfunded liability. So that actually decreased a little bit. It didn't decrease quite as much as we would have wanted it to. I'll talk about that in a little bit. But at the end of the day, we're just under 84% funded on an actuarial value basis. Again, I could get into a lot of detail, but like I said, the market's going to bounce around and do what it does. And the nature of our work is that we have to kind of take a snapshot at one day. And I'm sure you hear in the news, the S&amp;P, all of these securities are bouncing all over the place. We have to kind of keep it stable. Otherwise, your contribution rate would be bouncing around a lot more than it otherwise would. But anyway, this actuarial value of assets, we use to then calculate your contribution rate, which shaped out to about just under 30% of active member payroll and a couple bucks under $1 million to be contributed in the following fiscal year. Again, I said that the unfunded liabilities didn't go down quite as much as we expected. That's primarily because of payroll increases that were larger than we expected. That's not something that's uncommon, particularly in the public safety space where they're trying to pay folks a little bit more to help with retention. That's a very common thing. And it also fluctuates from year to year with overtime and things like that. So that wasn't anything too far outside of what we generally see. It was just a little bit more than we expected, so it resulted in a tiny actuarial loss, as we so fondly call it. So there's two components of a contribution. There's the normal cost. And I don't know who came up with that name, but that's what they call it. That's basically the cost of someone accruing another year of service. So you've got someone who comes in as a cadet. They're going to have their whole career, probably until the time they retire with, I believe it's age 50 and 25 years of service for normal retirement. And then each year, you kind of have to calculate an amount that you're going to put away so that you have this level of funding. That's your normal cost. So basically, with each additional year, on average, just under 17% of payroll is basically what it costs to fund that pension. And then the other part of the contribution is your unfunded liability amortization payment, which is basically that $6.4 million that we have up there. You basically chop it up like a mortgage and we're paying that off over 21 years. And that's the 13.16% that you have there. So those are the two components of the contribution. Again, in terms of dollars, shaped out to just under $1 million for this year. I'll just stop there because that's generally where people start to tune out, see if there's any questions. Please.
Could you re-explain what's the difference between AVA and MVA?
Yeah, so that's a good question. So the AVA is the actuarial value. And that's, you can kind of think of that as a trailing, moving average of your market value, which bounces around quite a bit. So we basically use that so that your contribution rate isn't bouncing around because that just makes it hard to plan. But I have a slide that gets to that in a little bit and you'll see exactly what I'm talking about. Thank you. Please.
Okay, so you have funded liabilities and then you have unfunded. I need you to explain that, you know, what you mean by unfunded liabilities.
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. So remember, I had those two cylinders over there. One was for all the benefits that are going to get paid, one was the assets. The benefits that are going to get paid, we have a measure as of now, basically, of how much money we need to fund those benefits. And you can think of that as your liability. So that's your liability number. That's the $39.558 million. And then we compare that liability to your assets, the money that's, you know, on hand. And the difference between those is the unfunded liability. So if you have more assets than liabilities, then there is no unfunded or it's negative. But if you have less assets than liabilities, it means that there's a little bit of catch-up that needs to be done. But not that much, I mean, 84% funded in the public sector pension funding space is really good. I am very pleased to be standing in front of you all saying that you're 84% funded because I have the opportunity to do that very rarely. So kudos.
Well, I'm glad you said that because I was going to ask you how we compare with other communities.
So I mean, there's a little bit of context there which I'll get to. Actually, we can look at it in a couple of slides here. So this is historical funding progress. So I think we all know what happened in 2008, right? There was a little bit of a hiccup in financial markets. And actually, prior to 2008, the plan was overfunded. So there were more assets in the trust than there were needed, according to our calculations, to fund the benefits on an actuarial basis. This is a very common story, you know, across, and luckily, it just didn't hurt the Mount Pleasant police fire as much as it hurt other folks. But that's a very typical one. And then basically, people spent the next two decades trying to get back to where they were. I guess not quite two decades. But another thing that changed is declining expectations in capital markets. And so the most important assumption that we use, you know, as I said, we have probabilities for dying, retiring, all of this stuff. But the most important assumption that we actually use is the assumed rate of investment return because that's basically the interest rate that we use to move dollars from the future to the present. And if you change that interest rate, that assumption, by just one percentage point, you have a fluctuation of, you know, plus minus 10% in your actuarially accrued liabilities. And that's quite a fluctuation. And I would say over the last decade, certainly since I've been in this line of work, the capital market expectations have come down nearly a percentage point. And so you can imagine that, you know, it's quite frustrating. I think it was you who actually asked the time, the question a year ago. You said, "Well, once we get to 100% funded, like, aren't we good? Isn't that it?" And I was like, "Well, it is good, but you're not done." You kind of have to think of this as like the health. Like, a pension fund is kind of a living, breathing thing. You know, just like I go to my dentist and I have a good checkup. They say, "Great, no cavities, you know, gums look good, everything good." I can't just stop brushing my teeth, unfortunately. I got to keep it going. So it's really something that we need to stay on top of. And also, our understanding of, you know, dental hygiene and health and on dantics. All of these things change. And as a science, because at the end of the day, this is kind of an academic exercise, our understanding of everything actually changes. The mortality rates get updated, retirement rates get updated, capital market assumptions get updated. So that's actually part of the reason why this funded ratio doesn't look bigger in recent years than one otherwise might expect. But thank you for your question. I realize I went probably a bit deeper than you might have desired on that one. Is there anything else someone would like?
I have a full-up question.
Keep it coming, yeah.
Okay. Right. Thanks for indulging me. So let me ask you hypothetically, if, you know, we are kind of floating. All right, what do we need to do? What should we do to make sure that, you know, we are actually on top of things and we're not facing a crisis? What would be your recommendation? Based on, you have a better picture of this than I have. So given what you know and what you see out there, what might be your recommendation for us, you know, to make sure that we're safe, we're okay?
Yeah, that's a good question. I guess from where I'm sitting, I just look at it from the numbers. And so I see every year, the actuarially determined contribution that we calculate that gets put in, you know, into the fund. And that doesn't happen everywhere. So the first step would be, let's make sure that we make that contribution and that is not an issue here. I think this is, again, I'm standing before you all, a very proud actuary, being able to say that the contributions get made. We're in a pretty good spot. We're pretty far from anything that resembles a crisis. As I said, I mean, $2.4 million in benefits going out the door each year got over $33 million in there right now. So we're not in any kind of liquidity issue. So to your point, I think, to just stay the course, maintaining, you know, that funding source. And also, I think what we're doing here today, we're talking about it. I think that's probably one of the most important things that one can do to keep up with this all because you never hear about pensions in the news. The only time you hear about pensions in the news is when something's going wrong. Like, no one was talking about social security for decades, right? And then now they're like, "Oh, 2035, it's going to be empty." And it's like, "Well, this has been happening for a long time, you guys." But it wasn't part of the narrative. So it's a great pleasure for me to get to speak to you all about this today because you're doing it. You're doing it right now. Other than that, you can just give me a hard time and make sure that we're doing a good job, I think. But Chris does a pretty good job of that, as far as I can tell. Anything else? Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. I love that. Anything else we can dig into, just in these numbers? I'll just kind of keep going with my little spiel here. So as I said, we're all about expectations, you know, the extent to which what we expected to happen, that it did not actually happen. As I said, we expected the unfunded liability to go down by a little bit. It did, both as the result of the asset experience and also there were a couple of benefit changes as a result of negotiations with the 13th check to future retirees that reduced the liabilities a little bit more. But then, at the end of the day, because of the payroll, there was about .2 million more than we would have expected, given all the other things. So we call it an actuarial loss, the extent to which these unfunded liabilities are grading. It was about .2 million, really not a lot. But, you know, just to give you some explanation as to why those numbers moved. You can see in 2023, that bar at the top is fairly small relative to the other bars that happened over the last decade. Last year, there was a pretty significant asset loss, approximate market value loss of negative 16%, which is totally in line with what happened pretty much everywhere else and every other fund as of December 31st, 2022. That was then kind of made up, if you will, by an approximate 16% market value gain this year. The only distinction I will make there is that on an actuarial value basis, we expected the fund to make 6.75%. So if you make 14, 15, 16%, it's only actually kind of doubling that as opposed to completely offsetting negative 16. It's still, it's about halfway offsetting it, maybe a little bit less. And then this is really the description of the actuarial value of assets with respect to the market value of assets. That market value is going all over the place, which it should. That's kind of what you want and that's where you get the value out of investing. Periods of volatility often yield high returns. But we just don't want to use that for our measures because then we're not painting a very accurate picture, kind of an unbiased picture of what's changing with the fund from one year to the next. I think we already talked about this a little bit. We're on the right track, certainly an increase from last year. And you can blame us for some of those decreases. You know, we changed the assumptions, made things a little bit more, quote unquote, expensive. But that's really us just trying to keep up with the industry standards. And we certainly are held to a certain actuarial standard, which, you know, even though it's not always fun, we have to adhere. Just, so we kind of talked about what are the risks. And like I said, we're not really in any sort of crisis mode by any means. But I just want, it's important that you are all aware. So we calculate this contribution rate as a percent of active member payroll. And basically, what that means is that we expect the dollar amount to be increasing by wage inflation from one year to the next. That funding model really only works if you have an increase in payroll, which we do. So there's no issues right now or really in the near future, as far as I can tell. But if you do not have a stable active population, we cannot use that type of funding method because then the payroll is going down. We would have to do a level dollar. So the demographics of the group really do drive the calculations that we're allowed to use, I'll kind of say, to some extent. But you can see here, the ratio of actives to retirees is quite a bit less than it was in previous decades. And that's what you'd really expect because you have more retirees, but the actives are staying the same. One gets bigger, one stays the same. Eventually, you know, it's going to come to some kind of equilibrium. Generally, you'll have a ratio there in the neighborhood of 70, 65%, where it starts to stabilize out. So we're just on our way to becoming what's called a mature plan. But we're probably not to total maturity, which people tell me I might not be either every once in a while. Bring that to the conclusion. There's a slight increase in the actual dollar contribution, mainly a product of increases in pay. Next year, maybe that'll be offset, maybe it won't. But at the end of the day, it remained fairly level. There was no changes to assumptions and I don't expect that there will be in the coming years. We're in a pretty good spot with all the assumptions, in my opinion. And then there was that benefit change that we had to incorporate in evaluation because not only do we keep in touch with what's in the actuarial community in terms of our discipline, I also am looking at the bargaining agreements to make sure that our provisions are actually reflecting reality because that's important. And with that, I will skip over all these numbers that maybe no one's interested and ask if there's any questions.
Sir, the 13th check, could you explain that for me real quick?
I'm not super familiar with what it actually is. But basically, at the end of each year, based on what tier the member is in and whether they're police or fire, there is going to be an extra payment that is made to the member. I think the idea there is, so a lot of places, well, a lot of places. Some places have what's called a cost of living adjustment, which is an automatic increase to the pension. And that's great for the benefit recipients, but sometimes that can get very expensive for the systems. So a lot of systems will kind of opt for, you know, an ad hoc COLA or a 13th check as a way of, you know, giving the members a little bit of cushion. And I think I mentioned that, so the newer tier in the bargaining agreement had excluded that for some newer members. And so that just reduced the liability. It's a very small portion of the liability.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Okay, well, then I thank you for your time and have fun.
Thank you. All right, now we have a presentation by Municipal Employees Retirement System of Michigan.
Good evening and thank you for inviting me to address City Council, Commission, and the administration and the employees that are in the audience. A pension-heavy meeting today. And so it's kind of great coming after GRS because they actually are the actuaries for the MERS system. And all of that work on telling you the definitions and the concepts, I would not want because he already laid that out. I'm going to go over the highlights of the annual evaluation report and tell you what is the status of your MERS pension system. And just, I'm going to say, you have two pension systems here. One is your police employer, which is administered here by the city. And then we have your other employees, which we administer the pension plan for them. And so the MERS retirement board is the fiduciary of the MERS plan. And the city has their fiduciary responsibility set up on their police and fire plan. And so I would like to start off on this report by going to page, I can't see with my glasses on. I wear them off. I apologize. So I want to start on page six. The first pages of this is really just telling you that we use Gabor Rohr Smith, an accredited actuary, and that they're a consulting actuary. They consult with us to manage the MERS plan just like they consult with you to manage the police and fire plan. So it's good to have them in both pension systems. You're 70% funded as of 12/31/2023. You were 70% funded the previous year. So the next, as we go through the executive summary, I'd like to go to page eight. And what it starts to talk about at the bottom of page seven and page eight is it says that, you know, MERS strongly encourages employers to contribute more than the minimum required contribution. And you have done it in the past, and I'll show you exactly where that is. And one of the reasons that is, is it will help, you know, bring your funded level higher sooner than it otherwise would. It helps to withstand some of the market losses in down years. And then when those assets are in there, it then will help take advantage of the market returns in good years. We mentioned at the bottom of this top column about what is called the surplus funds division, which really assists plans with navigating that volatility. I'll show you how that is working and I'll show you where that is in your plan. But one example of putting in additional dollars to get to 100% funded quicker than you otherwise would. You're currently on track, if all assumptions are met, to get there in about 16 years. But if you wanted to get there sooner, like in 10 years, if you had the dollars to do so, you'd put in approximately $172,000 for a month, I mean, a month, instead of $136,000 that you're required to fund this plan. Don't have to, but that's just an example of how putting additional dollars in sooner gets you to a higher percent funded quicker, if you would like to. Moving on towards the bottom of page eight and going into, we talk about our long-term rate of return. And our long-term rate of return is 6.93%, which is almost in line with the state of Michigan. They have 6.9%. They have six point nine. We're almost there, but with our dedicated gains policy, with the gains that we had in 2023, that brought us from seven point oh to six point nine three. The state went up from six point eight to six point nine. We're almost in line. Why is that important? Because we have to comply with Public Act 202, in which we are all use, all systems are required to use standardized assumptions in valuing plans, so that state treasury can see if there are any risks in the other plans across the state. So our, a, a long-term rate of assumption is at six point nine three, and we are pretty much in line, as, as the previous speaker said, they, they, everybody used to be around eight percent, they would move down to below seven, now it's started to creep back up because of the way that you can invest your dollars have alleviated some of the reasons for having such a low, uh, uh, long-term rate of return. Moving down here to page nine, this really discusses smoothing. And when we talk about smoothing, it was discussed by the previous speaker. So it takes out those peaks and the valleys so that your required contributions are more manageable from budgeting from one year to the next. So our smooth actuarial rate of return is only a five point, five four, a little bit less than our six point nine three. But last year, we made ten point nine four percent. So we made over our six point nine three. Previous year, we lost ten point six. We wanted to make seven in that year, but we only made, we lost ten point six. So we lost about seventeen percent of what we thought we'd make. This year, we made what we thought, plus about three percent less. So that did help smooth out, so it's going to be smoothed out, um, those gains and losses. At any time, if you have questions through this, ask me, but I know that you just went through this on your other pension system, so I understand. Going on to page twelve here, these are where we get some projections, which really start to put some illumination onto what all this means. Here you can see for, at the end of 2023, you had accrued liabilities of forty-one, a little over forty-one million, you had assets of about twenty-seven point, uh, seven million. Now, keep in mind, when you look at this, it says you're only sixty-seven percent funded. I just told you you're seventy percent funded, and you are, because you have that surplus funds division, which allows, when you put money in the asset column, it wasn't associated with any retiree. It's just being held there and taking advantage of market returns. At any point in time, the city can move those unassociated surplus funds divisions to one of the, the divisions, and that would then change your funding position, but it also would change your minimum required contributions. Most reasons why, or the number one reason why groups use a surplus funds division is to increase the funded level, but also so it doesn't impact their minimum required contributions to help them move to a higher percent funded sooner than the otherwise would. But at any point in time, those surplus funds, if you've got just under one and a half million dollars in there, you can utilize those funds to, to, to change it. It's accounted for, but here there's trying, because in that last column says your estimated annual contributions, well, if we accounted for them, that one point five million dollars here, then your estimated contributions would be otherwise less than what they, they're stated here. Going to page thirteen, is where we have some graphs associated with those projections. So this is a cross right here, which is really important for the state. They want to know when all the groups would be sixty percent funded, because that's part of Public Act 202, the requirement that if you're not there, you have to do what's called the correct action plan, you're above it, so you don't have to worry about it. But here, it shows you that, you know, you're sixty-seven percent funded with the solid blue line, but we're showing you that surplus funds division is the blue dotted line, that you're actually more funded than you are. If you were just sixty-seven percent funded, you're going to get there in 2040. But it looks like you're going to get there maybe in a year earlier with that one point five million in the surplus funds, you'll get there about, you know, 2039, if all assumptions are met, and you continue to make the minimum required contributions. This shows you what those minimum required contributions are going to be in a graphical form. You can see here about one point six or so million, it's going to peak over two point five million, then it will drop. There's a couple of reasons why that's going to happen. One, we're forcing you to a hundred percent funded, but the, the other reason is, is that unlike your police and fire pension system, your MERS defined benefit plan is closed. All new hires as one twenty twenty-four, one one of twenty-four, will go into a defined contribution plan. And so they're no longer earning a guaranteed benefit, they're earning an account balance. And there's different contributions for different groups of the city. I think there's really only two, but there are a few different divisions set up. And so when we show you table one here, the previous speaker said that if you're closed, there's no way to fund it as a percentage of pay, which is correct. And so that's why you see this bottom half of this graph in a level of dollar. And yes, you do see division eleven with a percentage of pay, but that's because that plan also was closed as one one twenty-four, but it was, the work was completed in May of 2024, so it didn't get into this valuation in time to show that it was closed. And so that will be picked up in next year's valuation, and you'll see that it no longer will be a percentage of pay, and you'll be paying these flat dollar amounts. And so since these changes have been made, and you're, you're currently paying now a flat dollar amount for your, your defined benefit plans. All of those employees that you currently have, they're in that plan, retirees are still there, and will have to, basically will have to work through the system. Eventually, they'll be no longer active members, they'll be no longer retirees and beneficiaries, and soon that pension system will have zero liabilities and may have assets in there. When it gets to that point, that could be sixty years down the road, maybe longer, but when it gets to that point, if there's anything left over, we send a check back to the city, because those dollars are the city's. Just to show you how large your system is and how many members are represented or participants are represented, you have, as of the date of this report, seventy-nine actives, it's probably gone down a couple since then. You have twenty-six participants that are vested, but you're yet not old enough to draw a pension. There's a hundred and seventeen that are either retirees or beneficiaries of the system that are drawing checks. You can see that number, you're paying, I don't know, about, you know, two and three quarters of a million dollars every year to those retirees. That's a large drawdown on your, on your pension, because that's what, what they're getting. Then there's seventeen employees that paid member contributions to offset the cost of the defined benefit plan, had terminated with the city, they're no, they're not vested, and they won't, they're not eligible to earn that pension. So they have a penalty refund of their member contributions. And we send letters to contact them and ask them what they would like to do with those dollars, and until they tell us that they want to forfeit a partially earned benefit, sometimes they can get service credit coordinated through Act 88, the Michigan Reciprocal Retirement Act, nineteen sixty-one, or MERS to MERS now. If they don't, they should just take a refund and, and get off the books. And we ask them that every year. We send them, we send out communications to them. So there's total two hundred thirty-nine participants under this plan with your, you know, which represents over forty-one million dollars worth of, of pensions earned for liability. This chart is a, a flow of valuation assets, and it's, it's a historical table as well. One thing that you notice over here is by the year, and then you go across the top here, employee required contributions. As you can see, what, these are what was required by the, the assumptions in place. Back in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, and twenty twenty-two, the city put in additional dollars. Those are the dollars that were put into that surplus funds division. You can see that your employees contribute each year, and currently right now, or last year, they put in just under two hundred thousand dollars to help offset the cost of the plan. You can see that last year, you made about one point four million dollars in assets in the plan, that's an actuarial number. You can see that you paid out here about two point six million, and we expect that you'll be paying about two point seven million in this current year. And that shows you what your valuation assets are. Then on this table, this is where we bring in that surplus funds division. Obviously, there's no employees in it, so there's no total liability, there's only assets. You plug that in, that helps you become seventy percent funded. It's in parentheses because liability is a negative number, so two negatives make a positive, that's why it's in parentheses. As you can also see over here in division eleven, it is fully funded. It's a hundred and fifteen percent funded, so you have a surplus in assets there on division eleven. Overall, your system is doing quite well, seventy percent funded, it's about the MERS average. You have now closed these plans, and now your, as the previous speaker talked about that maintenance, you're going to continue to maintain this. All of your new hires will be going into this new defined contribution plan, earning that account balance. The city will continue to make its minimum required contributions, MERS will continue to invest your assets diligently. Our, the motto at MERS is that they are downside protection first, and then upside protect, upside participation after that. You don't want to lose your assets, but we do want to make some money on them as well. So you'll find that MERS is, in the down years, we lose less than other systems, and in the good years, we make money, but we may not make as much as late. And that's the philosophy that we have, downside protection, upside participation. With that, the rest of this report is important, and if you want to get into it, please do. All the tables after this are getting to, on a divisional basis. Then there's tables that GASB, your auditorium needs for GASB reporting, there's, which I'm not familiar with, you would have to talk to your finance director on that. They have reports so that you can comply with Public Act 202, so we have a, an analysis there so that they can fill out that, is it eleven fifty-seven, the first one, I think it is? We also have a benefit history section. And then the previous speaker talked about risk and maturity metrics. Yeah, you're on the truth system. And then we have those maturity metrics, and we explain what that is, and then we do a risk analysis, and there is no risk in this plan, from, uh, being able to make the pension payments on time when they come due. So with that, I am opening up this for questions.
If you could go back, it's just one page, page nineteen, I believe it was, so if you just scroll back, we were talking about the additional funds in the plan, yeah, in twenty nineteen, twenty, and twenty-two, so the additional contributions. Can you explain to me the additional, the additional funds that went into the surplus division? Were those funds where we as a municipality just decided, hey, we have this, we, like the municipality have a surplus and added those in, or was it something to do with, like, employees, like, just the market is performing well, so, like, the contributions are doing better? Where do those funds come from? Could you?
So, so, so thank you for, for the question. And whenever the city or municipality chooses to put in additional funds, that has to come from the governing body of, of the municipality. Some try to ask about market timing. Pension systems are really not something that market timing really works with, because it's so long-term. I just told you that you closed your plan, you've got at least another sixty years to be in it. And so market timing is really difficult, but it could have been basically on what assets you have as a city, and what your requirements are, and what you guys decided was good to do. And so you looked at different factors and came up with a decision. I don't know what that was, it wasn't part of those meetings, but it came from this board and your administration working together.
Gotcha, but so the primary, most likely source of like our additional, of the fund, the additional funds is us looking at our budget and saying, hey, we want to contribute in addition to help catch up or, or get to like finish our plan earlier?
Absolutely, it, it comes from, from the board.
Good. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Thank you for so much for allowing me to be here.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
Always good to meet with you.
All right, our next presentation is data analysis from our interns. Manager DeSantis.
Good evening. So I'm joined this evening by our data analyst interns, Austin Benchley and Alexis Reed, who I had introduced just a few short months ago. They've been very busy over the past few months. They've been working with a system called Placer AI, which has given us a lot of data on consumer behavior within the city of Mount Pleasant, as well as the outside township as well, too. They're going to talk about a number of different things that they have studied over the past few months here. They're going to talk about some of our popular destinations, popular events. They're going to talk about some information related to a study on median income within the area. They're also going to talk about psychographics, what that is and why that's important to us. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to both Austin and Alexis and have them kick off the presentation.
Thank you, Aaron, for the introduction. As you said, my name is Austin Benchley.
And I'm Alexis.
So as Aaron was saying, we've been using Placer AI to get a variety of insights for the city, and we're excited to share that with you. So Aaron, I already kind of touched base on this, but we're going to once again kind of go over what is Placer AI. So Placer AI is an advanced software that provides data and assists users in applying to real-world situations to support understanding and decision-making. So Placer partners with other industry leaders, so third-party organizations, to get a variety of different data, so it is not just them coming up with the data. For this project, we utilize a variety of different reports, specific to civic development. They offer other reports, but we want to use our time as best as we can. So, and as I've explained before, they also utilize a variety of different platforms to look into this data besides just them. So again, as Aaron kind of mentioned, this is the agenda we have for today. We're going to briefly look at a median income analysis, then we're going to touch base on some different industries in the city, kind of the ranking of some of the businesses. I'm also going to take a look at Soren Eagle, the farmer's market downtown specifically, and then we're going to kind of end it off, and I'll pass it over to Alexis, who will look at psychographics, demographics, and a variety of different things in the Mount Pleasant area. So to start off, we actually did a median income analysis. So originally, Mount Pleasant's median income was set to be around forty-three to forty-six thousand dollars, which is significantly below the state average. This kind of comes with some perceptions of the city of Mount Pleasant that aren't necessarily true at all, and we wanted to kind of look at it from a different angle and show how having CMU in Mount Pleasant affects that median income and how it's not really very accurate how Mount Pleasant is as a city. So we actually did a few different ways using Placer, and actually also had a professor at CMU look into it as well. And we got a new median income of around sixty-one and a half thousand, which is much closer to the state average of around sixty-six to sixty-eight. Also looking at Mount Pleasant's affordability it has, with this new calculated median income, it actually gives Mount Pleasant around a six and a half to seven percent higher purchasing power than the state average, which is obviously great for people who are starting out or anyone really who wants to move somewhere and get a little more further money. And I'd also like to preface, if you guys have any questions after any of these slides, don't hesitate to ask. So now we're going to go into our industry rankings. So what these are, basically, we're looking at a variety of the top industries in different segments like retail, fast food, et cetera. We're looking at their monthly visitation, where they rank in the state based on visitation, and then we also looked at how much CMU played a factor into that visitation, as well as some of their demographics, like male, female, age, and whatnot. And on the next slide, I'll actually kind of go more into what big findings we came out of that, because as you can see here, it's as expected, like Walmart, Meyer, Sam's Club, your big retailers are at the top of that list on visitation. So we actually were kind of surprised to find out that the ranking of Walmart and Meyer compared to others in the state, both of those industries were in the top three most visited of those corporate places in the state of Michigan, which obviously for Mount Pleasant, which isn't a necessarily massive city by any means, is which obviously for Mount Pleasant, which isn't necessarily massive city by any means, is a pretty interesting finding to come on. And in another report by Placer, which matches up with this one, there actually was set to be an unmet demand for the grocery industry in Mount Pleasant as there'd be some room to grow for other businesses there. And this kind of fits with how high the visitation of Walmart and Meyer are because there's more room for growth of other businesses. So contrary to that actually though, Sam's Club was a low ranking compared to the rest of the state. And what we hypothesized is this is due to a lot of college kids not having space for involuntar purchases that Sam's Club offers, as well as not wanting to pay for a Sam's Club membership. Some other interesting insights we came upon was that Target, Dollar Tree and TJ Maxx all had a predominantly female customer base, while Home Depot was predominantly male, which isn't exactly out of the ordinary. But that was about a seventy percent or more actual predominance. So it is a big, big statistic. So then we took a look at the fast food rankings. And the top three are all different McDonald's in the area. And then we go down and having Culvers, Taco Bell, another McDonald's, Rally's, Panda Express, Burger King, Burger King and another Taco Bell at last. And we actually found something quite interesting with this. And it's that all of the fast food places that have multiple events such as McDonald's, Taco Bell, Burger King, all their South Mission locations did a large amount better than the ones that were even on East Pickard or not very far apart. I mean, as you can see right at the top, McDonald's on South Mission has sixty-one thousand monthly visits, while the East Pickard one right at the corner has only forty-six thousand. And that's a fifteen thousand visitation month difference, which is astounding considering they're only a couple of miles apart from each other. And obviously, we hypothesized this is due to CMU being in a lot closer kind of proximity to those places. And that's also significant if we ever have any fast food places that want to move into Mount Pleasant area, you can show them that statistic and kind of persuade them maybe to move in more towards the South Mission area if they want to see those growth numbers. We also found it interesting that the Rally's in Mount Pleasant is actually the number one ranked rally in the state of Michigan on visitation. We believe this is due to it being one of the only fast food places whose lobby was open late into the hours. They actually stayed until two o'clock, which matches up with the Mount Pleasant nightlife. And it's also right next to Mount Pleasant's Wayside and O'Kelly's. So you have kind of those compounding off each other. And as we'll get into in a couple of slides, Wayside and O'Kelly's are a big driving factor of entertainment, bringing in a lot of people from outside of the city actually as well. We also looked at the fast casual popularity of different places. Only going to touch on this briefly because there's not a ton in this segment. But we looked at Panera, Fudova, Chipotle and Blaze Pizza, which actually recently closed down. But looking at these, we've noticed that all of them have a high concentration of customers from CMU, which could partner with them being on South Mission, or it could also be due to that dining style just being popular with college kids. We also noticed that compared to the other ones, Panera's customers had about a fifteen percent higher concentration of females than the other fast casual. And that could be due to a variety of reasons. So then we went into sit-down dining. At the top of the charts, we had Texas Roadhouse, which tends to be one of the higher ones in the entire state in each city. So that wasn't exactly surprising. Then we have Applebee's, Buffalo Wild Wings, Olive Garden, IHOP, Great Wall of Fay, Esteycas, Bob Evans, Pixie and Benetton's. So looking at this data, we noticed that the chain restaurants tended to outperform the family owned restaurants in Mount Pleasant. And another thing that we saw though is kind of interesting was that Bob Evans tended to attract a much higher age demographic of fifty-two plus than its competitor of IHOP, which I do not exactly know why that is. They're relatively close to each other and serve similar meals. But due to this, IHOP ended up higher up on the rankings. We also tended to notice that places like Applebee's and Buffalo Wild Wings are more kind of college catered businesses and they tended to do better. So now we're going to get into the entertainment popularity rankings in Mount Pleasant. So no surprise, Soaring Eagle is at the top of that, which are with around two hundred and sixteen thousand monthly visitors, which then steeply drops down to more records at twenty-six thousand, which is still considerable. Then we have Wayside, O'Kelly's close behind that. Then we go into Island Park, The Bird, Riverwood Resort, Celebration Cinemas, Green Spot Pub, Blue Gator Pub and Polcat Golf Course. And we wanted to include more of the bars on this ranking just because we felt they were more entertainment geared instead of just dining. So looking at this, if we actually went deeper into Wayside and O'Kelly's, we looked at where they're drawing visitors from in the state. And they actually have a very wide span on people that they draw into the Mount Pleasant area. They're drawing people in from Saginaw all the way down to Ann Arbor, all the way up to even the Alpena area, kind of corresponding with a lot of the different colleges in the state. But we were surprised about just the magnitude of how many people from those areas came in. Also, obviously, Soaring Eagle was by far Mount Pleasant's biggest attraction. It provided business for many of the places in Mount Pleasant, which we'll see more in their in-depth look. We also saw that the bars that tend to do better were more catered towards the college population. So you had a much higher percentage of college age kids going to them. And the only exception of this was the Green Spot. Then lastly, with our industries, we looked into the miscellaneous ranking. These were just a couple that stood out and it didn't necessarily fit into a category, but played a big role in the amount of people they had. The first of this was Jars Cannabis, then Mr. Car Wash, then Planet Fitness. So some tickle weights from that, we noticed that the Mount Pleasant Planet Fitness actually performed below average on visitations to the rest of the state. And we believe this is just due to the Student Activity Center being close to it. There's a lot of competition in that market. And then we were also surprised that the Jars Cannabis ended up performing higher than average due to Mount Pleasant having a large variety of cannabis places. And it's also kind of out of the ordinary because it's not located on South Mission. It's actually over at East Pickard, which kind of goes away from some of the typical trends we've seen. We're then just going to quickly take a look at kind of some of CMU's impact on the community. We touched this in the industry ranking, but this is more specific to them. So what you're looking at right now is a percentage of CMU's on-campus population that's going to these different places. So for example, the McDonald's had fifty-six percent of CMU students visited the South Mission McDonald's at least five times during twenty twenty-three point four school year. Then Walmart, we had fifty percent, Target forty-six point eight, and then so on, Indian Hills Plaza, Meyer and Central Michigan Commons. Why this is important is it just gives us a more in-depth look at where these students are going so you can kind of play on what businesses you want. Stacked onto that, we also looked at where the people who were visiting CMU's favorite places were. Or, I'm sorry, that's actually the opposite. This is the residents, the previous one was, the visitors. So the residents' favorite businesses were, talk about O'Kelly's, Seven Lovers, Stadium Mall, Wayside Central, Chipotle. Then I believe we can get into the visitors now. So then the visitors' favorite places were Indian Hills Plaza, Central Michigan Commons, Walmart, Meyer, Stadium Mall. Nothing too significant there as.
Oh, sorry. When, when you're done, just I'm letting you know here.
Yeah, no, perfect. But basically, nothing too significant here, like I said, just kind of restaurants and a couple of food places. Yeah, well, this is your question that you're wondering on.
When you have these general plazas or these stadium malls, is that because the data doesn't really, like, do people make like maybe multiple visits? Do people like, do, do you know if they, do you have any?
Yeah, so the reason that they're in these general plazas is because not one business in that plaza is getting enough visitation for it to be up high on the ranking. But we can't go in and look at each individual place in the plaza and see like this one is doing the best. For example, the Texas Roadhouse that showed up on the industry report, that one is located in, I believe it's the Central Michigan Commons. I'm not, I believe it's that one. So we can go in and look more in depth.
So theoretically, we could say the prospective business is this area gets so many visits. Doesn't it look like a nice place to set up a business?
Yes, yes, exactly. And that's why we really wanted to take a look at those bigger areas. Because like you said, if a business wants to move, then you can say like, hey, we have thirty-five, or thirty-two percent of visitors that come to CMU also visit this area if that's your market.
Right.
So yeah.
Cool. While there's a quick break, pause, I have a question as well. Determining the difference between students and year-round residents, I know a lot of it would probably imagine be, do they go back to a dorm building and everything? Does that where they're like to film rests in the evening? What about apartment complexes and whatnot? Is that taken into, so determining a CMU student versus a year-round resident, I guess?
Yeah, that's a great question. So how we actually did that is we looked at CMU, as you said, their campus and whatnot. We also looked at a variety of apartment complexes. And to find out if they're CMU students, what we did is, is we actually did a minimum of twenty visits to CMU a year. Because we said that if a person's visiting CMU more than twenty times a year, they're most likely related to CMU. It may be a faculty member, but most likely it could be a student. And so then we're able to look at these different businesses and say, hey, they have twenty percent of their customers that are going to CMU more than twenty times a year, most likely they are related to CMU. And that's how we came up with this number.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so I appreciate what this, this is really elaborate. You've done a lot of work. So absolutely wonderful work. Very, very insightful and detailed. So the question that I have, that I'm asking is, actually, you know, a little bit more specific for me here. When you're talking about the entertainment section, I'm surprised that you didn't include CMU. Because things happen at CMU, right? There is theater, you know, there are a whole range of things that are happening and, you know, you didn't include that. So I wonder why, you know, I'm not thinking about CMU as business per se, but that part of, you know, engagement, football, all those things, entertainment. You know, again, I want to ask you maybe two parts. So why didn't you include them? But how are you defining entertainment? It might be the reason why you didn't include CMU. I don't know. How did you define it?
Alexis.
So go ahead.
So that's a great question, actually. Within Placer as a software itself, it has different things that differentiate industries between each other. So when we were coming up with these reports, we're looking at what's statistically significant within those areas of the software. So there's minimal customization within that area. And beyond that, when we are looking at visitation on a, for example, like a day where we bring in a statistically high number of visitors, I'll get into that later in my portion of the presentation, but those are mainly correlated to athletics and sporting events on campus. Within the software, it does limit us to knowledge about things that are statistically significant when it comes to these reports. And I believe that with the smaller size of different areas and the way things are spread out within the campus, the way we're able to look at different buildings and different areas of Mount Pleasant is through geo-fenced locations that are called points of interest within the software. So with CMU, we have that as one and different businesses are around it. But to be able to section off different parts of the building, it's a limitation within the software due to both their privacy laws surrounding buildings revolving around education and also due to square footage limitations.
That's interesting. Well, I appreciate that because I'm thinking, you know, the, the music department, right? You know, the theater department, right? The film festival, there are a whole range of things that are happening. And that might also have implications for Meet Michigan because they also do things. And so these are, you know, that piece of information seems not to be present. But I understand what you're saying, there is a gap in the software or the mechanism for measuring that sort of things.
And something to be looking forward to with phase two of the Placer project as it's being planned out, Placer is constantly updating and adding new tools within the software and modifying existing ones. And something they're currently looking at is the privacy laws that they have to adhere to and how there will be different ways to work around those when the people involved in those buildings want to allow access to it. We weren't able to look at any information directly pertaining to City Hall and its boundaries because it's a government building, there were limitations around looking at the hospitals and visitation from other areas. But those are things where now it's been put into motion that if the people operating these buildings or involved in these buildings give permission, especially within civic development, we'll be able to look at those numbers in the future.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Alexis, for the explanation. We have a couple more things to look at and then I'm going to actually pass it fully off to Alexis. So this is just a continuation once again of a couple more of the visitors' favorite places. We have Soaring Eagle show up on there, Target, McDonald's on Mission, Sam's Club and Texas Roadhouse, kind of rounding that out. So then we wanted to take a look at just how much Soaring Eagle affects the Mount Pleasant area. So these are just kind of a list of statistics we took from Soaring Eagle. They have around two and a half million visitors a year, around seven thousand average daily visits. We looked into Saturday and Friday, too, because those are their busiest days, which were around eight to ten thousand and six and a, six to seven thousand. Then a couple other little things, we had the yearly visit frequency was around four. So that means that those are your more loyal, that's your customer loyalty, most people are visiting about four times a year. And then we also saw that the audience median age was around thirty-six point three. So they're not necessarily getting just college kids and they're not necessarily just getting older kids, but a very well-rounded crowd, I assume, is going there. So we then looked at Soaring Eagle's most visited events. We actually did this too because we were kind of looking at what would happen if Soaring Eagle ever thought to have almost a music festival like Midler has done recently or Fast the Horses, which was just obviously a much bigger scale, but something like that. And on that road, we came across some of their most visited events. The big takeaway we got from this is most of the artists that tend to do the best are country artists in the Mount Pleasant area. And then Pitbull also did very well on the two times it was supposed to come. So all of these brought in around twenty thousand people, yeah.
Oh, I'm waiting, just letting you know.
Oh, yeah. But all these brought in around twenty thousand people to the city. Now, not all of those necessarily were at the concert, but we've noticed looking at other music festivals, even if people weren't necessarily buying a ticket there, they'd actually come to the area, they'd spend time, they'd go to the casino or they'd even just tailgate in the parking lot and listen to the concert take place. But, yeah.
So anecdotally, I think there's a general feeling that when people sometimes come to an event at the Soaring Eagle or, or, or come to Recreate, they may not go to the city or they may not, you know, patronize other businesses in, in the Mount Pleasant area. Does the software have the ability to say, oh, this, you know, we had five thousand people who came from Lansing and of those five thousand people, a hundred of them also went to Texas Roadhouse? Like, can we tell, oh, they came to the casino and then they also did this? Can we, can we find that out or not really?
So we think it quite as in-depth on where they came from and like, say like, they're from the Lansing area, they went to the casino, then they went there. However, we can look at the casino and say like, I believe actually, the next slide, yeah. We can look at the visitors that came there and what percentage of those visitors also visited another area in the Mount Pleasant. So right here, these percentages are based on just one visit to the area from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. And they saw that around twenty-three percent of Soaring Eagle's customers also visited the Central Michigan Commons, which is a substantial amount when you have two and a half million people. So we are still drawing in a good amount of people from Soaring Eagle into the city, especially in those big plazas which have places like Texas Roadhouse, your dining. Like number two, we have Indian Hills Plaza. Three, we have CMU, which is obviously due to your student base. And then we have Meyer and Walmart, which are even drawing in a lot of customers, which could be because there's people in the area that come to the casino, then do their shopping and head home. But yeah, so we can actually look a little bit in that. And as Alexis was saying, in their phase two, they're planning on looking more in-depth at how we could see what area from like Lansing is going to Mount Pleasant then there. But that's. But that's too advanced for the software at the moment, but great question. Um, and this is just a quick picture of the trade area of Soaring Eagle as well. So as you can see, you have your hot spots in red and then your blue is a lesser amount of people, but still enough to show up. So they're drawing a large amount of people regionally. And even if you zoom out that map farther, you'll see they're attracting people all around the country. Uh, we also briefly looked at the farmer's market. And, uh, we just wanted to see what days tend to do better, how many people were being brought in on those days. So what we found out is that typically on a Thursday when the farmer market is running, they draw in more people actually, uh, around four hundred and fifty-three compared to a hundred and seventy-six on average on Saturday. But people that came on Saturday tended to stay longer. And, uh, we believe that's probably because the people coming on Saturdays then went on to enjoy time at Island Park, whereas people on Thursdays were probably coming for the farmer's market and that was their sole reason. Um, then we looked into a downtown analysis. So we looked at the most popular places in downtown, which one was Greetree Co-op with, uh, around fourteen thousand visitors. Then the Berg, Isabella Bank, Blue Gator, Max and Emily's, Downtown Dist. Town, Nebraska, and Muggs. Uh, we then looked into what the busiest dates were in draw, uh, downtown and what drew the most people in. And, uh, this briefly touches on CMU actually. As you can see, number four and number two were both due to CMU. But we did see that the two things that tended to draw the most people downtown were CMU football games and, uh, bar crawls, which are hosted by kind of not affiliated place called Lyman's, which is throughout the state of Michigan. And they actually host these bar crawls in partnership with the bars in Mount Pleasant. And those, I mean, three of the dates were due to that bringing people in. So those definitely have a large impact on, uh, downtown. And then I'm gonna, well, actually lastly, do you, any of you have any questions over the first half of the presentation at all? All right, well, now I'm gonna pass it off to Alexis.
Hi, everyone. So I'm gonna start with the student opinion survey that we conducted. We did a two-part survey covering housing and business options within the city of Mount Pleasant. And we figured we would share some of our significant findings. We first looked at, uh, general satisfaction with business options. And we see that over fifty percent of our sample of seventy-four students put that they were between neutral and very satisfied. And then we looked at favorite area within Mount Pleasant and we saw that downtown Mount Pleasant won by a significant margin within the opinions of students. And then we did include a question, including, um, industries lacking options within the city of Mount Pleasant. And we found that the entertainment industry had sixty-seven percent of participants saying that it was lacking. When we looked further into that information though, it is important to note that that did come partially from a lack of knowledge around what is offered in the Mount Pleasant area. We had a section where we included the ability to write in what you would like to see in the city. And we found that people were including mini golf, roller skating, ice skating, and we have the options for those within the area. So that's more of a lack of marketing rather than a lack of attention on that industry from what we deducted from our individual analysis. And we looked at the enjoyment of current living arrangements. We did see that seventy percent of the sample enjoy where they currently live and the options available in Mount Pleasant. When we looked further into the thirty percent who were displeased, we saw that more students want the availability to live within downtown. A lot want the option to be able to live alone and some see a need for more large-scale houses intended to be rented by groups. So when we're thinking about the percentage of students who expressed an interest in being able to live alone, we stated, our question was phrased around the guidelines of if they were both equally accessible. And we found that over fifty percent would prefer to live alone if they were both equally accessible in the area. So now we're gonna jump into psychographics. Psychographics are a market segmentation model and it's developed through statistical analysis meant to give you the ability to anticipate consumers' opinions, activities, and interests. And we utilized third-party data given to us through Placer that's provided through Experian. And they refer to their program specifically as Experian Mosaic. So when we're looking at the Mount Pleasant area, the surface area covered doesn't indicate the amount of people that make up that psychographic dimension. It's showing just the surface area covered in general. So that's not by numbers, it's by area. And when we look strictly at the numbers, the gray area is where most of our population is making up that psychographic and that is the singles and starters section. So a lot of this does come from the college student population and those who are recently graduated. And singles and starters are very strongly correlated with the mantra full steam ahead that's provided within there. They have an increased interest in coffee shops, which we see reflected in our area as well, something that people are very happy with, whereas some other groups might think that we have a surplus of coffee shops. And then the green area is what is referred to as flourishing families. These are people who have children of varying ages. They're referred to as generational soup. And they have a strong interest in school systems in the area, family-oriented activities, and also daycares within the areas. They have an increased interest beyond other groups. So those two psychographics make up the majority of our population numbers. And the report that Austin and I have put together does an extreme deep dive into the psychographic makeup of both Mount Pleasant and the Union Township. So this is the state of Michigan as a whole in our surrounding areas. We didn't go all the way to the bottom of the state, we didn't go all the way to the top. We were looking mainly at what's surrounded Mount Pleasant. And we can see that we really do have a strong singles and starters population, which is the gray area comparatively to the rest of the state. So this is just a quick overview of what else is in the Mount Pleasant, Union Township area, which again, the report will go into extensive detail on. And something interesting about psychographics is that they're meant to be used as collaborative data alongside demographics to paint a really full picture of the area in question. So within the report, we included three key demographics that we thought gave a full picture of our area. So we looked at median age, we also looked at population density, and we looked at median household income. And I'll go through those again, that was really quick, sorry. Um, when we're looking at median age, we see how young Mount Pleasant is due to our college population comparison with the rest of the area. And we have sections in the report that show how these can be cross-analyzed through median age and then population density compared to the rest of the area of the state. And then again, the median household income.
Uh, just as a point of reference, um, not right now, obviously, this would be for later exploration. But is it possible to like create a report for like median age, for example, um, that's, that delineates between, uh, college students and, uh, like full-time residents also? Like, or like showing those different populations as well?
That's a great question. I think I, just to make sure I fully understand, you want to be able to look at the median age within an area when excluding the college population and then looking solely at the college population?
Yeah.
Oh, I just wanted to make sure I understood before I jumped in. Um, so there are some limitations within that that Austin did cover. We can't definitively say whether somebody is a student at CMU or a faculty member at CMU, but we can look at the percentage of visits within Mount Pleasant to CMU or outside of Mount Pleasant to CMU and look at it within that lens and separate the two groups that way. It's not exact numbers, but it would give you a good idea of what those numbers would be.
Okay, I have a follow-up question.
Mm-hmm.
Because we talked about demographics and when Austin was presenting, looking at the guests or the visitors in the stores, you know, he, he had information that seemed to suggest gender, you know, disparity, right? You know, a lot of women visiting and a lot of men visiting certain stores. So when you're looking at the demographics, I, you know, if you broke down the demographics, are you able to do that to sort of say, well, given the, um, you know, let's see, you know, racial or ethnic composition of Mount Pleasant, where are the people located? Does this particular software make that possible?
To be able to look at different demographics within specific areas. So we do have the ability within what's called Map Studio within Placer to create overlays of different demographics, psychographics, as well as traffic data. And it's extremely customizable to the needs of the user. So that is something that definitely could be put together and included in part of phase two. It's not something that was worked on initially in phase one, but it could potentially be worked on in phase two.
Okay, I have a follow-up piece too. And kind of what I'm asking also because we've got the, you know, we have the, um, you know, the reservation next to us. Did you include that population or did you limit it to what is, you know, the area just simply geographically defined as Mount Pleasant? Because you do mention Union Township also in some of your presentations.
So for some of the areas of phase one, we did focus specifically on Mount Pleasant.
Okay.
As we were looking at industries within Mount Pleasant. And there are different aspects where we did include Union Township that would be included in phase two that we started. And I'll jump into that when we're wrapping up. Um, but that is something where the reservation was included in certain aspects of the report, whereas in others, we looked specifically at Mount Pleasant.
Okay, all right, okay. So it, it might be useful to at least indicate where, you know, uh, in your, your, um, analysis where the reservation was included and where it's not for me. But because for me, I'm thinking, you know, wondering how the geography, you know, is defined or being constructed because there are moments when you include the casino, which is not necessarily in the quote-unquote Mount Pleasant. There are moments when the casino is not figured in. There are moments when Union Township is also figured in or not figured in. And I would be interested to see, you know, how you sort of break that, you know, uh, uh, delineate those pieces.
And in the report, which I believe is going to be given to, uh, the city commission members, um, within that, there is text that correlates with each of the imageries, which goes through the geofenced areas, what exactly the points of interest are. And we'll expand upon that. And I believe in phase two, we're gonna be expanding even a bit further.
Okay, cool. I am looking forward to this.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
And then, uh, also just, uh, touching on that question further, as Alexis was saying, in the report, each segment I do believe has, uh, not only a picture of the area we analyzed, but there's also a variety of different, uh, options. For example, for some of them, we used, uh, our basis as a ten-minute drive from the city center. Because we felt like that covered the best population. And for others, we'd use like a five or ten-mile radius. Because as Alexis was saying, it's hard to get exactly geofenced the perfect like union or boundaries. But Placer AI did allow us to use a variety of different ways to get those, uh, answers, which are included in the full report.
By the way, this is good work, just so you know. This is really good work, I like it. Thank you.
We appreciate that. And then lastly, what I'm really gonna touch on is the driving force of visitation within Mount Pleasant. So this does touch on events held at CMU because within this area, we are looking at the high visitation dates within each year. And we're also looking at the overall visits over the course of a year. And this is specifically to Mount Pleasant. So we were looking at both in-state and out-of-state travel. And we found that the common denominator between most high-number visitation days dating back in our historical analysis from twenty seventeen up until present day, we were able to go as early on as the end of August. Oh, gosh, sorry, the end of June. Um, so we're able to have a really good picture of where we're at currently as well. And throughout all of the seven and a half years of data that we have access to, at least two of the three high- visitation days were tied to sporting events or athletics in general. And we found this data through conducting the historical analysis, both through general visitation to Mount Pleasant as well as through a hotel analysis. So we could really get a feel for the out-of-state travel as they're the most likely group to be staying in a hotel. To ensure statistical significance of the information, we looked solely at the top two hundred zip codes as anything below that would have made up less than point two percent of the overall visits that year. And we were able to see that each out-of-state visit within the point five percent makeup was tied back to athletics. So something that we considered while we were working on our report and phase one in general was lower enrollment at CMU as well as COVID recovery. And the way we were able to pinpoint our highest year of visitation was through the comparative analysis. And we found that twenty eighteen was our highest year point of visitation, again, with all three high- visit dates linked back to athletics. And when we compared the data from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-three, we saw an eighteen percent increase in visitation. Again, twenty eighteen did have higher numbers than twenty seventeen, but we do see growth from the early on years. That's.
Eighteen or eight?
Eighteen.
Eight, sorry, my apologies.
No, I just, I, I can read that part.
Yeah.
You have twenty eighteen here, is that, you know?
Eight percent.
Oh, eight percent.
Yeah. Twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-three was an eight percent increase in visitation.
Okay.
Um, and this is general visitation overall, but we do see higher numbers in more current years than in the early on years for the high- visitation days. So we see higher numbers for those as well. Um, and when we were looking at our ten most visited locations in Mount Pleasant, we saw that six out of the ten had an increase in visitation in the past year as well, ranging from one percent to thirty-four percent increases. So we are seeing evidence of significant growth within the area, both business-wise and through general visitation. And while we haven't worked back up to our peak numbers of twenty eighteen, our high days of visitation are extremely comparable and certain dates have even surpassed some of the higher numbers we saw historically. And something that's really important to note that you'll be able to see in this graphic here is that our growth is sustainable. When we're looking at twenty seventeen to twenty eighteen, we see a sixteen percent change. And then the years following that, we chose to compare to twenty eighteen. So we see that negative two percent in twenty nineteen as twenty eighteen was a higher visitation year. Then we see the negative twenty-one percent decrease in twenty twenty, obviously, due to the effects of COVID. And in twenty twenty-one, we see instead a five percent decrease, a five percent decrease again in twenty twenty-two. And we've worked our way to a three percent decrease from twenty eighteen in both twenty twenty-three. And here now, from January first to August eleventh of twenty eighteen, we didn't compare the full year of twenty eighteen as we haven't finished the full year of twenty twenty-four. So we took the months we had access to and compared. And it's only a three percent decrease from our peak numbers historically. So when we're looking at that five percent, five percent, three percent, three percent, it's sustainable. It's definitely, it's statistically significant when we're looking at it through the grand scheme of things. So I found that to be a very important finding within our project and something that I found to be very exciting as well. So jumping into where we go from here, with our research, we got a lot of answers, but it also led us to quite a few more questions as research typically does. And it naturally led to ideas for what phase two will look like, some of which we've discussed here, some of which will be included in the appendix of our report. And part two, part of what will be specifically looked at does include leakage. Something that was a point of interest for us within the project was seeing where exactly we are losing business, where people are leaving Mount Pleasant for. And that's something that's currently in the works, the report is currently being built and will be further examined in phase two. So we'll be able to look at the impact of city events and opportunities for growth in individual industries. And a lot of that is gonna change and morph too as Placer changes and morphs. So, and that's one of the great things about Placer is that the team is constantly developing new tools and new reports for users to be able to look at and draw conclusions from. So, any other questions? Oh, sorry. Did anybody have any other questions yet?
I know one of the biggest things we talked about over and over was that this was gonna be used to look at where people are leaving the city to go to. And there's not much in the report about where people. And, and that was one of the biggest reasons that we talked about doing this. Um, it's, it's to, and, and one of the things that I, I, I was, I was looking at is the idea of all the, I mean, we're looking, because one of the things when, I, I know you, you guys were here. One of the things that I brought up was the idea that all these, all these large businesses are gonna have their own data, right? I mean, we, and, and they're gonna know, McDonald's is gonna know, where am I gonna put a McDonald's to be successful? We're not gonna do the research and figure that out and say, hey, McDonald's, come to this area, right? So one of the things we talked about that was a main draw for, um, for this was to say, where are people going in other areas that would bring that here? And I don't see any of that. I, 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 I see that there's like a lot of places where, um, where, where we see where people are going here. But, but I, I just don't see anything like that where people are leaving to come to the city.
And that's, uh, that was a point of concern for us as well within working in the project. We actually went through two versions of leakage reports initially. When we first outlined Mount Pleasant and geofenced it and created it as a point of interest and we did our leak- And we did our leakage report. We saw that when we received that report back, everything was showing up to be within union township because we had initially began with Mount Pleasant. So we were seeing Walmart on there, we were seeing Soren Eagle on there, we were seeing things that we can, that are part of the township and should have been included in the initial outline for where we did our leakage report from. And then we did a second leakage report where the boundaries for union township and Mount Pleasant, we ended up getting separate data for the two. And there is an issue within the system with the POI outline. And we worked with our customer success representative. When you work with Placer, you're assigned somebody from their team to help you best use both your time and your money and your tools. And she was able to help us construct a comprehensive POI that encompassed everything that we consider to be a business within our city limits, our township limits, and what we wouldn't count as a loss retail wise or any industry wise. So currently that is in the process of being ordered. The turnover time with some of the reports that are generated by the software itself can be upwards of two weeks. So throughout our 12 week position here at, uh, City Hall, we, we got to the leakage report fairly early on, but with the amount of versions we had to go through, unfortunately, it did have to get moved to phase two for the full understanding. But we're hoping that the visual report and the high numerical points will be able to be included in our report, which will be submitted this Friday. Hoping that we'll at least have the bones for that, and then the analysis will come later on in phase two. So we fully, we fully share that sentiment regarding it, and we do apologize for it not making it into phase one.
I do actually have a little bit of data that we actually, uh, do have compiled on looking at not Mount Pleasant as a whole, but, uh, specifically downtown, we did actually look at where downtown was losing people to specifically, we looked at, uh, Mount Pleasant's downtown versus Claire downtown and Midland downtown. And, uh, we have a full report on that and we had some interesting findings. We were actually losing around, I think, it was around 23,000 people a year to, uh, the Claire downtown instead of the Mount Pleasant. Sadly, we didn't include it on here just because we didn't want to run too long on our presentation, but that is all in depthly done in our final report where you can see the businesses of Claire downtown, how they compare to Mount Pleasant. We look into the what times Mount Pleasant downtown is bringing in people in versus Midland and Claire. And we also look at how over the past few years, as Claire's downtown has evolved, Mount Pleasant has continued to lose people in our downtown to the Claire downtown. We did find that Midland's downtown didn't, wasn't a major competitor for, uh, the Mount Pleasant area, but we like to look at them because they had a similar population size in their downtown is doing very well in the events they plan, um, the people they're bringing in. So we did look in that specific area on some of the losses and gains and how we could improve that, and that is included in our final report.
Thanks.
Hi, Austin, I do appreciate your comment right now because actually I was going to ask where our people are going because that, that was one of the things we talked about. I realize that you may not have detailed information about, you know, who is coming in and, and because of gap, you know, some gap in the software itself or your mechanism. But it does provide us with some information that I, I'm going to be honest, I would not have known a lot of the things that you're telling me here. And this is useful information regardless. It provides us with some information that we can think about as we think of how, what we're going to do next. So my question really, you know, was really to say to you, okay, if we're losing people, where are they going? Because that was one of the things that we were, we were also trying to figure out. And now you're saying to us that there is a component of your research that says to us, here is, you know, where our people are going and provides us with some point of comparison, hopefully in the future. So hopefully when you come back the next time, you can, you know, flesh out that because that's also relevant. We need to know who is coming in, where are they coming in from? But where are people going? To whom are we losing business? You know, if we, and what type of business is drawing people away from us really, you know? So if we're going to grow business or encourage businesses to come in here.
Yeah, exactly. And sadly, we couldn't look at some of the bigger areas on Mount Pleasant just because CMU especially messes with those numbers just because they have so many different people from all over. But, uh, we were happy with, uh, the results we got from the downtown and we're really hoping that, uh, this leakage report that's going to be coming out soon has some of that more in-depth information out of the city as a whole. Yes.
Thank you. Oh, sorry. Question for kind of less about the data and more about the process of analysis and everything to make sure the project, the project is successful. You two have been doing great work with this currently. How long does your intern, internship go through? Like is it, and it's, I think I heard it mentioned it was ending in a couple of weeks, was it? Or is it, or is the question if it's going to carry on or?
It'll be Friday.
Friday? Gotcha. So kind of my question would be, um, as we look to continue utilizing this data, um, what does that look like as you're handing it off to the next, like whoever is using it, using this next? Kind of your takeaways of like handing this off to like either city staff or to like internships in the future? What does that look like as you're handing off advice or thoughts or what? Just kind of your thoughts on that.
Yeah, um, I'm going to touch on this and then I'll let Alexis share her own thoughts on it as well. Uh, I definitely think we have a solid groundwork on a lot of bigger issues in Mount Pleasant. And, uh, luckily, as Alexis was saying earlier, Placer is always adapting and changing. So it is a relatively newer software. So as it's getting more and more advanced, you're going to be able to look into a lot more of those in-depth things that we want to see, which aren't quite available to us right now. So, uh, I'm not exactly sure what the exact plan is for the city's use of it in the future. But whatever it may be, I think even a year or a few months from, I mean, even a few months from now, the software will probably be so much more advanced to where there'll be a whole new, uh, kind of folder of things for a new potential person to look into. And Alexis, have you had anything to add on that as well?
I think that something that future people working with Placer will have as a benefit is the fact that Austin and I had never worked with Placer before when we started this information, when we started this internship. We both had an understanding of Placer and had worked with geographical information systems before, but this specific one was new to us. So there was the learning curve of learning the ins and outs and the tricks and how exactly to make things work. They came through a lot of meetings, both with Erin and with our customer success representative. And through the time we have spent on this project and outlining our report, as well as the presentations we've done, I feel like there's a strong ground for a future person to come in and be able to really use that as a building block to understand the software earlier on and not have as much of a learning curve with it. I think too that what I had touched on before, that when you're doing research, finding answers naturally leads to finding more questions as well. I think that being able to look at this report and have those questions come up, especially in somebody's mind who has a stake in the city and interest in data, these kinds of things, it will lead them to the correct areas of phase two and allow that to kind of take on its own form through the guidance of both Erin, everyone involved in the city and as well as what we've kind of determined to be unfinished and needing to be focused on in phase two.
So let me ask you hypothetically, um, if you were to make a suggestion in terms of frequency of this study, so how often might you suggest? Yearly, annual, that, that might be tedious, every three years, every four years? What do you think?
I think that's a really interesting question. I think that my mind immediately jumps to the fact that we have access to seven and a half years of data. And the reason we can go back to 2017 is because of the founding date of the company and when geographical information systems were really able to begin utilizing cell phone data. And I think that within that, I think that there are new tools, different maps, different reports that come out on a monthly basis. I think personally, I think yearly, like a summer internship could be beneficial with working with this software, maybe not on as brand of a scale, in my opinion. I think that that's something that the city will really be able to explore and come to their own conclusion on it. And Austin, you have any thoughts on that?
Uh, I think you put it beautifully right there. I mean, it is definitely an interesting question, but I feel like you, the city itself definitely gets a lot of use out of having an internship program look into it versus where you, I mean, could pay someone else a lot more money and kind of come upon similar conclusions.
So what was the greatest challenge for you? What was the challenge with this for you? Or did you even encounter any challenges?
Personally, I, especially working with data and working on projects like this where there are groundwork and there's a goal and there's a lot of communication and collaboration, it's hard to see things as challenges rather than just things on a to-do list. I think that there are challenging components of anything data oriented, especially with the software that you might not be familiar with. I don't think any one thing really stuck out. I think that there, the most challenging part was the issues that come with technical difficulties when working with the software. I think the issues that the leakage report, some of the other reports that we thought, we were looking at migration and we wanted to see who was moving here permanently and also leaving here. And we found that there is nothing statistically significant due to our population size because currently Placer is oriented to look at things in the thousands and tens of thousands, whereas that's not going to be our experience here in Mount Pleasant. So I think just finding out what exactly worked for us individually as a city and as a township was a challenge.
Yeah, uh, I would agree with Alexis there on, uh, they definitely have a lot more broader numbers. So for like New York City per se, obviously you're going to get a lot more statistically significant results on where people are coming from and going, whereas Mount Pleasant, we don't exactly have the population to get those numbers. Uh, I'd say personally for me, one of the more, I guess, exactly biggest challenges, but something a little bit frustrating was that we were coming upon a lot of really interesting conclusions and stuff that we wanted to share with a lot of different people. And sometimes getting a hold of people and finding times that meets everyone's, uh, schedule is hard to do. So that's definitely a difficulty in only a three-month internship where you don't necessarily get to reach out to all the people and share the data that could kind of contribute to making a change that we would have liked to.
Excellent. Good job, good job.
Thank you so much.
Thank you guys for helping us out.
And thank you so much for your time and thank you for the opportunity to be able to work for the city on this because this was really exciting. I think I speak for Austin and I together that we had a really great time being able to do this and kind of give some answers to some of the questions the city had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, I'm going to ask the, um, commission, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Okay, seeing none, I will entertain a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
I hope that we accept the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. All right, we're going to move into public comment on agenda items. I want to remind everyone that public comment and public hearings are opportunities for the public to comment on business and non-business items. Questions will not be answered during these times and should instead be directed to City Hall staff during normal business times. If you wish to come forward and speak about something on the agenda, you may step to the podium. You'll be asked to state your name and address and you'll be given five minutes. If you are joining us by Zoom, you can use the raised hand feature or star nine if you're joining Zoom by phone. You'll be let into the meeting and be asked to state your name and address and you'll be given five minutes. Is there anyone on Zoom? Okay. Are there any emails? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak at this time? Come forward. On agenda items.
I worked for, gave out this call for as an agenda item. I, I tried posting a question through, through the link on the, to these page and it was not going through. So it might not show that out. And I was going down some of the local Facebook pages that lots of people say they were going to be participating, contacting. And I said that maybe it's the same issue, maybe there's some, some issue where they can't post questions.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak at this time on agenda items?
Hello, I'm Joseph Carey and I live on 109 North Arnold. I just want to continue on the placer.ai because Commissioner Chapman, you brought the good point, you know, I was here too when we first discussed it and very clearly, yes, we were looking for that kind of outside source. But to be fair, this is a brand new system, right? That's all I would add on and tack on. It's like, yeah, we had an original purpose, but we also have to be open with that purpose because this is full of so many possibilities. And just with that presentation alone, just seeing the super, uh, power that it brings on us, just knowledge on visitation, just opens up the door. Cause like as someone like myself who is a consistently a volunteer at, uh, the art reach, now I want to know, how can I get hands-on these downtown data? Because this is super important, right? The, it's, it's more about networking from the presentation that I got. Forget outside forces coming in. We, we have the power to make all of those visitations even greater by just collapping businesses together. We, we now know the best events. How do we work that to our advantages? You see what I mean? Like there's, there's so much to this and, you know, good job to the, to the interns. Because, uh, yeah, I'm a little disappointed I didn't get that answer either, but at the same time, I'm excited for what this really truly brings, which is just being open and trying to make the best of every bit of information that we can get out of this program. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on agenda items? All right, then I'm going to close the public input and move on to receipt of petitions and communications. Manager disents.
Proceeding petitions and communications includes the minutes of the airport joint operations and management board from June.
All right, we're going to move on to consent items. Are there any consent items that the, uh, commission would like removed from the consent calendar and placed in the regular agenda? Okay, seeing none, manager disents.
Consent items this evening includes approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held August 12th, 2024. Approval of the minutes from the closed session held August 12th, 2024. Consider setting a public hearing for September 9th, 2024 to allow for public input and to consider the adoption of an ordinance to amend Title V, Public Works Chapter 52 Water of the City's Code of Ordinances entitled Administration and Enforcement. Consider setting a public hearing for September 9th, 2024 to allow for public input and to consider the adoption of an ordinance to amend Title 15. Land Use Chapter 152 Housing Licensing Code of the City's Code of Ordinances. Consider request to award the 2024 boiler replacement bid to Gateway Refrigeration, Inc. of Claire for $137,508. Consider approval in support of the Mid Michigan Regional Lime Counselor Study and appoint BPW Director Jason Moore as the city representative and consider approval of payrolls and warrants.
All right. I will entertain a motion to accept the consent items as presented.
I hope that we accept the consent items as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. All right, now we're moving on to our public hearing. For our public hearing, um, this is where the public has the ability to come forward and speak on what we're going to discuss tonight, which is the adoption of 96.05, oh five lawn maintenance ordinance amendments. Manager disents.
So staff has prepared a proposed amended version of the city's lawn maintenance ordinance based on feedback provided by the city commission. The amended version shows the proposed changes from the current ordinance. This includes the expansion of the noxious weeds list to match the Michigan Department of Agriculture and Rural Development list and an expanded list of allowable native grasses. The proposed ordinance would allow these native grasses to grow to an unrestricted height while turf grass height restrictions would remain in place at the current standard. After the public hearing, the city commission is asked to consider a motion to adopt the ordinance as presented.
At this time, I'm going to open the floor to the public hearing and those that wish to speak on this may step up to the podium. You'll be asked to state your name and address and you'll be given five minutes. If you're joining us by Zoom, you may use the raised hand feature or star nine if you're joining Zoom by phone. You'll be let into the meeting, asked to state your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes. Is there anyone that wishes to come forward and speak at this public hearing? Is there anyone on Zoom? Are there any emails other than the ones we received already? If there's no one interested in coming forward, I'm going to close the public hearing and move on to the city commission. Are there any clarifications that the city commission needs at this time?
Just a comment that we did receive an email that is questioning if it's something that we'll be able to keep up with, with code enforcement. And I haven't heard that worry be expressed before. And I wondered if we might have an answer to that query.
I don't know to keep up with what aspect of it. It's unrestricted height. And as long as they're growing the species or the, I think that's what they're called, species of grass that is native to Michigan that we have listed, barring a safety hazard, I don't know what there is to necessarily keep up on.
Thank you. Are there any other statements or inquiries?
Yeah, I'm just talking about that. The concern, I think as, again, we had received a comment from both property owner, the number of rental properties. It was the concern of someone going through the time and effort to invest the money to churn their lawn into native landscaping. I don't think someone would do that without like consideration because as they actually pointed out, transferring over to native landscaping takes time, investments of man-hours. And I think code enforcement, I think one of their concerns is just people allowing their lawn as is go to seed. And I think code enforcement is well versed in what a turf grass lawn looks like when it's just allowed to grow. So I think code enforcement will be able to identify when someone's putting in time and work and they can see the differences in vegetation versus someone who is just trying to take advantage of the system. I think this ordinance, we've crafted it, we pared it down from the really complex style that we went to initially. We pared it down to a much more direct, this is what we want, this is what we don't want. And I think it's a really good step that fits our community. I think it's not just the benefits to ecology, to the local ecosystems, as been pointed out about pollinators, but it's also about water retention. Native planted yards and lawns retain water much better, meaning they require less watering throughout dry seasons. And during wet seasons, when we have heavy amounts of rain, they hold the water better. So there's less runoff, which is again a boon to the community. I think when we look at addressing issues such as climate change, it requires a multitude of disparate changes and small actions. And this in itself won't address, it won't solve all our problems. But this is one of those multitude of small changes we have to make to help adjust. And I think this is a good conservative step that we can take as part of our community.
Commissioner Ekke?
I appreciate what my fellow commissioner here has stated, and I agree completely with what he stated. I do think that the concern, you know, if I'm reading this letter that we received, clearly it seems to me that there is an assumption that everybody might be expected to do this. I don't think that this is for everybody. There is no requirement that everybody in the city has to do this, but people who want to do this. And I do think that if we want to be, you know, inclusive and environmentally responsible and also sustainable, there are people who don't necessarily want to have, you know, what is it, golf courses as lawns, right? You know, and they want something other than that. Yes, we have heard the bee colony has collapsed, you know, because, you know, we need pollinators. Today I was in my yard and for the first time I saw two mouth butterflies, right? You know, and where have they been? So there are all these things that affect our food resources and our environment in general. And I think that it is, you know, just given apart from that, there is, you know, the need to accommodate people who don't necessarily want turf grass, you know, or golf courses, you know, for their lawns, but who aesthetically wants something else, you know. So, and I think this is an attempt to do that. And you are absolutely correct. We went from this massive discussion of massive transformation of the ordinance to paring it down to work with an already existing ordinance. We haven't changed that ordinance much, except for just give that wiggle room to accommodate people who are saying, this is the type of lawn that I want. This is the type of environment that I want. Can you give me guidelines? In fact, I think what we have done is to provide clear guidelines for people who want to do this, as opposed to not provide any guidelines and then go ticket them for doing something that we actually, you know, would like them to do or maybe they, they want to do. So I, I do think that, you know, as Director Maria has said here, you know, code enforcement can handle this. We have provided very clear guidelines in terms of what we are looking for. And the existing ordinance regarding grass height and all of that still obtains. So we haven't gotten rid of the ordinance. That one still works. Just so people are thinking, oh, it's not there. Actually, it is still there. So please pay attention to that, right? Yeah, it is still there. And this one just simply makes it possible for people who really want to have not, you know, golf course, you know, wants to do that. So thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Okay, is there a motion?
I hope to pass the ordinance as presented.
I have said no, second that.
Clerk, do we need a roll call? Commissioner Wingard?
Yes.
Commissioner Chaitman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Commissioner Ekke?
Yes.
Commissioner Rowland?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Alsager?
Yes.
Mayor Kirschbacher?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
We do not have any new business, so we're going to move on to announcements on city-related issues and new business. This is where the commission gets to speak out on anything that they know is happening around town or that they wish to share, or if there's some new business they'd like to bring forward. Do we have anything? All right, I would love to remind everyone that CMU has begun classes today, so has Mid Michigan. And we have students within our community again. I know that there have been times where it feels like there's more traffic, there's more congestion, but let's remember that these students bring a lot to our community and we should be watching out for them. Also remember that our, our young children are going back to school tomorrow. Mount Pleasant opens up their doors for the, for the year. And it's very important that we keep an eye out for the buses that are traveling, for the children that are crossing the street, for the crossing guards, for all of our young children around here. Let's keep an eye out for them and take care of them. Is there anything else?
Good idea. And point the students to the right directions because some of them are really trying to figure out their boundaries or their parents.
It's just nice not to have two one-way streets.
Yes.
There are so many people going the wrong way down the one-way streets when they first came. So we're, we're done with that. At this time, if there's no other comments from the commission, all right, we're going to move to public comment on agenda and non-agenda items. You may step forward to the podium. You'll be asked to state your name and address and you'll be given five minutes. If you're joining us by Zoom, you may use the raised hand feature or star nine if you're joining Zoom by phone. You'll be asked to state your name and address and you will be given five minutes. Is there anyone on Zoom? All right, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak? Come forward to the podium, please.
This is Douglas Collins and live in Winchester Towers, apartment 413. I wonder, could they even get rid of those, I probably brought it up before, but I'd like to see them get rid of those scooters. I wonder if they really do any good. They just are, they're clutter in the street and they're hard to see. I mean, at night, you know, they couldn't, I mean, you have really had to look out for them pretty carefully. And yeah, they weigh a lot and just in the way, I would like to, I wonder if, I wonder if they really do the city any good and just get rid of them.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak at this time?
Hi, Cynthia Kilmer, 219 North Lansing Street. First, I want to say hi to Mr. Collins. I was good friends with his dad. He was a great guy and was once a city manager. And I understand if you have some visual impairment issues, those scooters go really fast and could be scary. But that's not what I'm here to talk about. I used to sit where you sat. I'm going to be here more than once because I have a lot to say and five minutes is not going to cover it. My husband and I are both attorneys at town. We were both mayors, different years, different times. I sat where you sat. I'm not going to speak for him, of course, but when I sat there, I was always known as being really pro-public safety. Every public safety thing that came in front of me, I voted yes for. I adored Billy Egley. I, I praised the city police all the time. And I still am a really strong believer in public safety and the need for public safety. And I am not one of those defund the police people. I am not. Because as a woman and a mother, I understand the need for public safety. Because I can't fight off bad guys and my daughters can't either. And we're not gun-carrying kind of people. So we're the kind of people that rely on 911. That being said, I have a series of events that have occurred over the years that I want to share with you, but obviously I can't do it in one night. Those events, in my opinion, point out a certain patriarchal, gender biased issue, society, culture, I'm not sure what you want to call it, within the police department. How everyone five minutes is up. I'll be back over and over again to tell you about these things. One involved, a person, a young, intimately involved in these, I'm going to talk about four or five different times that I was intimately involved, either a direct witness or kind of indirect, on the side witness, but a witness in any event, one way or the other. Okay, one involved the sexual assault. A woman was trying to tell the police he was having on of it. Okay, and then a couple days later, they falsely arrested the victim on a bogus charge because they didn't check like her middle name and like how tall she was or whatever. And she had to go to jail. Okay, that was one. Another one, a female attorney, oh, me, called the police because of a death threat. And I could not get them to respond adequately without intense pressure. And then the response got turned around and the officer started yelling at me and my female staff. A third one involved a young woman who was evicted from her home. She had been living there four, five months. And her boyfriend had this new woman and the new woman, there was a big argument. And the new woman called the police and the police came and kicked out the young woman with no due process, with no eviction notice. They kicked her out of her home. The fifth one just recently occurred when someone I know very well had a PPO against a schizophrenic and dangerous man. And he violated the PPO. The police were called and they did not respond for five full days. And they did not respond until after the police officer asked the perpetrator's father whether he agreed, whether he should be arrested or not. And I am not kidding you one bit. Because this is my family involved. I'm a full witness to all of it. I talked to everybody involved. Five days, she begged them to get this guy away. Five days, they ignored her. And then they called the young man's father to ask him if it was okay if they arrested him. I'm not kidding. We have a problem. I've always been the best friend of the police I could ever be, all the time I've been in this community. But I'm done because we have a problem now. And we're going to talk about it in more detail at further public comments. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Kilmer. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak at this time? Is there anyone on Zoom? At this time, because we do not have any work session or closed session, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm adjourned.
I have seconded. It's yours, it's all yours. I'll second.
All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no?
No.
Motion carries. We are adjourned at 9:06.